All right, I'd like to open up the hearing schedule for 7:00 PM. Request by Alex Keaslin, Diane Welter, Marjorie Hess, Rudy Calabar for special permit for minor expansion less than thirty feet in height and central business architectural review for addition at seventy and seventy-six Masonic Street, North Hampton, Napa, East twenty-one D dash one twenty-three as advertised on March twenty-ninth and April fifth, two thousand twelve. Uh, this is a joint hearing for central business architecture. I don't see Bruce.
Bruce isn't here. I think I'm the vice chair, so I'll officially open our hearing.
Okay. Um, so typically when we have these joint hearings, um, we're gonna vote for the applicant, here from the public. Um, each board can choose to vote tonight. You all can vote tonight, we can vote tonight. Uh, each board can decide independently whether to close their public hearing, uh, if they feel they've heard everything, or if they leave it open, if they can claim the hearing to a later date. Um, I'm not sure if you all decided if you're gonna try to vote tonight, or if you're gonna carry this on.
Uh, we haven't met to decide anything.
Okay. We'll just see how it goes tonight. Um, all right, so the first thing is from, who's gonna speak for the applicant?
Well, I'll do that. I'm, uh, my name's Alex Keaslin. I live at one sixty-four Riverside Drive in Bay State Village, and I'm here to, um, and good evening, members of the joint committee. I'm here to ask for a special permit to build a small addition, well, a two-story addition to a building we own at seventy seventy-six Masonic Street. That's a, uh, governed and owned by a condominium association, Ansel Wright. Um, Marjorie Hess and Rudy Calabar are, and Diane Welter and myself own all the units. Um, I don't, uh, the, our case for not building a thirty, uh, a, a, a building that's thirty feet high is that no part of the building, uh, is thirty feet at this point. It doesn't make economic sense, or I think, uh, architectural sense to try and, and build such a big structure. It's not space we need or can afford. So I'm here to answer any kind of questions. You have, uh, you have all the, um, the elevations, shows you the facade, what we're gonna do. Um, the intent is to finish the building exactly the way the existing building is. Same color, same claverty, same double hung windows, um, to make it, uh, same trim, to make it look, um, as identical as possible. I should point out that this building that we have done our part to lift this building, it's ten feet higher than it was fifteen years ago. We jacked the whole building up when we renovated it and put a, a third floor, put a new first floor and made it a three-story building.
If you jack it up ten more feet, you'll make it thirty.
I don't know if we could do that anymore, but yeah. The neighborhood has changed.
Um, anything else, or should we just ask, open up the questions?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so we'll open up the questions from the boards. Uh, anybody have any questions for the applicant? One of the questions, I, uh, I know there's the path between the state key parking lot that goes in front of that building. And they're not gonna close off or block that, that path.
No. No, we're gonna keep that path, probably move it a little bit.
Okay.
But yes, it's a crucial, crucial component.
My goodness, nothing?
Okay, um, I have a question. Is there anybody in the public who wants to see what it looks like? Is there anybody that wants to see what it looks like?
Well, I think what the applicant's saying is that the, the finish, the exterior trim, the windows, and everything's gonna look exactly like the current building.
Have you included?
Not exactly what I'm looking for.
What would you, like, why don't you have?
Well, I'm, anybody in the audience hasn't seen this, that's what I, that's my whole point. Just, is anybody wanting to see this?
Oh, well, we'll, we'll ask for public comment just once I hear. Debbie, did you have a question?
Um, okay, uh, can I ask what the purpose of the addition is?
The, um, they're both expansions of the existing uses. Downstairs is gonna be an expansion of that, uh, office space, and upstairs is gonna be an expansion of the residential condominium.
So therefore you don't expect it to have any effect on parking?
No. Same number of people.
So it's an expansion of the existing unit?
Yes.
Okay, there's no other questions from either board, we'll ask if, uh, if anyone from the public would like to do any of that. All right, I'll just, uh, see, we'll see if anybody from the public's here to speak about this issue. Is there anybody from the public that'd like to comment on this? Just run up to the podium, state your name and address, and, Alex, you can sit.
Hi. Uh, my name is, uh, Bill Arnold. Um, I'm here representing two of the tenants who actually live at thirty-five State Street, uh, Residence A and Resident D. They're both working. One is a nurse and one is a musician. They can't make it, so they asked me to come. Uh, I am, have a business at, uh, North Hampton Airport, and they're concerned about the distance being five feet from specifically Apartment D and the two-foot or the, the ten-foot tower that's built in front of this tenant's door. So basically, uh, it's Dolores Baird, she'll be, when this, if this building is constructed, she'll be looking at a brick wall that's five.
I think that's the second, the wrong project.
Right, you're talking about the project we're doing next.
That, well, they're two in Sonic Street, one in, whereas ours is not, I know what you're talking about, it's not ours.
Oh, okay.
Right.
My mistake, my mistake, I'll just step right out, forget, I, forget I was even here on that one. Good luck.
Yeah, no, we got like fifteen minutes.
Oh, okay.
Uh, anyone else in the public here to speak to this issue? Uh, oh, so we'll take a, do you have a question, Captain?
Well, no, it's just this question that the staff had brought up about the easement.
That's also for the, right. So the, the only issue, the only reason I believe this is coming before us is because it's not thirty feet.
Right.
If, if this building, if this addition was proposed outside of central business, we wouldn't see it because it wouldn't apply. The only, the only reason we're seeing, at least the planning board side, the only reason we're seeing it is because it's less than thirty feet in central business. Um, so unless, if members of the, uh, central business have any questions, uh, Brandon, you want to make your motion?
I'm in.
For a second?
Seven.
All right, all in favor? All right, so we've closed ours and?
And we will close our public hearing.
A second?
All in favor?
Great, so the public hearing's closed, so we can't take any more, uh, comments from the audience. Um, any discussion on the planning board side?
I think it's, um, the thirty-foot requirement in this case would be kind of ridiculous. It's sort of creepy in the building.
All right.
I agree, I think the context of the addition and what it's trying to do and what the ordinance was intended to, um, enable was, this meets that, and so I'm, I'm fine with it.
Um, if you guys are okay, we, sounds like we can take our vote, and then you guys can decide what to do. So would anybody like to make a motion on this project?
I'll make a motion to approve special permit reminder expansion less than thirty feet in height in central business, mm, in central business district for the addition of seventy and seventy-six Masonic Streets.
For a second? All right, any other discussion on this? All in favor? All right.
Do we have any discussion?
No.
Does someone like to make a motion?
I would make a motion to accept the project presented.
Is it stated anywhere in that, uh, the plan versus the match, or is it just verbal?
It was verbal.
Is there any application? Then I, a second.
All in favor? All right. Motion, Captain. Great. Yeah, in fact, yeah, we came to start the next hearing for two or three minutes.
I'm saying.
Yeah. Well, we have, uh, well, we have some minutes on the planning board side, uh, we can, uh, quickly handle our meeting. So if everybody has the, the minutes from March twelfth to approve, March twenty-second, and March twenty, three sets of minutes to approve. Does anybody have any comments? How many minutes was there?
Do you have a question?
Do you have the staff recommendations for this?
Do you have the staff recommendations?
That's okay.
Maybe it could go over. Um, please, discussion on that. All right, anybody like to make a motion?
Oh, no, this is the.
I know we approved the amendment for March twenty-second, eight, and twelve.
For a second? Carol, a second. Uh, all in favor? All right, so this has been approved, and it is seven fifteen. Brandy, oh, um.
He has it. He goes into here. Yeah. He's probably gonna run faster if he just grabbed it off the table. Grab it from the.
So it all? Yes.
Yeah. Well, it is, it is. It's kind of like, this one?
Um, yes.
And then, um, just hit the enter my button.
Just the key, no?
Just to.
Okay.
So I'd like to open up the hearing schedule for seven PM, seven fifteen PM. Request by Thomas Douglas for special permit for addition less than thirty feet in height in central business architectural review for an addition at sixty Masonic Street, North Hampton, Napa, East twenty-one D dash one twenty-two, twenty-one D dash two fifty-two, as published March twenty-ninth and April fifth. Um, Brandy is in the butter, so if Brandy has recused himself from this year, um, that means Andrew, you're be voting for Brandy, uh, in this one. So, the applicant?
Hi, I'm Thomas Douglas, I'm the architect for this project. Sut Jolly is the, um, owner of it, and he owns that house there, which is behind the fireplace, I mean, the fire station, the old fire station. Sorry, I was working on the design ten minutes ago, so. Um, so we built this house about ten years ago on top of the old brick alarm building of the fire station. It's a three-story building. Um, you can see that the building behind it, the old fly-by-night building was almost finished when this picture was taken, and you can see kind of the relative height difference. Uh, the fly-by-night building with that type R wrap on it comes up to about the middle of the third-floor windows, uh, and so I, I couldn't measure what the height of that building was, but it's, it's pertinent a little bit later on. I think it's about thirty feet, and that building is taller than thirty feet. So there's the context with the, the new house behind it had, um, has a stucco facade to it with metal trim, and, uh, the green part is, is shingles, and it's, uh, they're pello windows, a wood clad window with real, with simulated divide marks. And that's the picture from further back, not as good a color. And that's the other side, and, and that part right there, you're looking down that, excuse me, alleyway to basically where the site is that we wanna build on, and if you see that tree at the end of that alleyway, there's a green space in front of those cars, between the cars and the tree, and our building will overhang that green space by about five or six feet. So you see those three cars down there at the end of that alleyway, you see that pickup truck, our building's gonna come to about that, that point. This is a better, closer shot of it, and you can see, um, the red house to the right is the, the butter, and then you can see further behind it, the fly-by-night building, the red brick building that, um, I think is about thirty feet, but I'm not sure. So this is the context, the aerial view of what we're proposing, and, um, so it's got a tower on the corner, which is taller than thirty feet. It's evolved a little bit since I gave you drawings, um, we were kind of under the gun to get this design into the planning board, uh, to get on your docket, so we've been designing some since then, so it's evolved somewhat. So I'll just go back to the site plan now. So you can see the, uh, red rectangle is the lot that we're proposing to carve out of the existing Media Education Foundation lot. So they, Media Education Foundation bought the old fire station, and they own that entire lot, and then Sut Jolly carved out the house to the left, the one that says existing. That house is actually now too big for him, and he wants to downsize, so he's selling that house, and he's gonna build a house immediately adjacent to it, um, a smaller house, a two-story house rather than a three-story house. And, and it's actually not even two stories because the first floor is all parking, so we're gonna preserve all the parking spaces that are there currently, and we're gonna build a house on top of it. And what you're seeing there on the first floor, since this is the first floor plan, is a storage area to the left with two doors, a double door opening into it, and then a stair on the right that gets you up to the, um, the second floor. And then you can see shaded in between the red property boundaries and the existing house to the right, which was that red gabled house. You can see shaded in there is that green space that I was just talking about, and it's about sixteen feet and change from the property line, the, the, uh, a second, go up here, if you want. It's about sixteen feet, sixteen and a half feet from here to there. So you've got another maybe five or five feet between the house and here, and then the house you can see is angled. This, this right here is a easement that, um, we've been working to try to figure out what the legal, who actually owns it, and where it came from, but it appears that this easement is a part of this lot, and it was sold as a part of this lot when Media Education Foundation bought it. Um, it's hard to tell back in history where it came from, but it, it basically gives right of passage back to this house right here. So we're gonna build into that easement, uh, over it, but we're gonna preserve the parking that's under it. So, um, and, and I know that there'll be some questions as to what, uh, legal documents are required to build into that easement, and, and Sut Jolly can answer them, or Sut's lawyer here, because they've been drafting some, uh, some documents regarding that. So this is what the house will look like from above, this is it from out in the street, so you're just gonna see a sliver of it. The, the fire, old fire station is to your left, and then this is, um, the other side of the fire station, and you're gonna barely be able to see anything, uh, of that house from this, this view. And like I said, the materials are gonna be the same, so you can see the existing house is on the left, and the new proposed structure is on the right, gonna use the same materials, uh, stucco for that lower section, uh, shingles, painted shingles for the other section, and then more modern, modern layout for, uh, windows. And the height, uh, want to, we're here for two things. One is for what it looks like, the aesthetics, and the other is for the height of it. And since I, I, I mentioned that it has evolved a little bit over time, the current height up to, if you, you see the third-floor windows, that's the little penthouse up there that gets you up to a roof deck. So the third-floor windows have a little projecting roof above it, and that's the, that's the roof right there. So the piece above that is a parapet wall, which actually doesn't count towards the height in downtown, but if I can, the height from ground to that projecting piece of trim above the third-floor windows is thirty-two foot two. So, but then the height to the lower stucco parapet wall, does everybody understand what it, the parts that I'm talking about? The stucco parapet wall, that's only twenty-seven feet. So our entire building, um, doesn't conform to the thirty-foot minimum, but portion of it exceeds the thirty-foot minimum by two foot two inches. So I'm not sure if that changes, whether you have any jurisdiction over this or not, I don't know, but, um, my, the main thing that I'm trying to, um, say here is that we're constructing a building that is very similar to the neighboring building that we built before, and is, is very, very similar in height to the surrounding buildings, and and that's why I go back to, um, to, let's see, these earlier pictures of what Fly-by-Night built, uh, back there, you can kinda see, we're gonna be about that height there with our, the new, uh, parapet wall. So this building is being built far off the main street, set way back where people can't see it very much, and it's gonna be conform in, in, um, in keeping with the surrounding heights of the, the neighboring buildings. Um, and then it's also going to be keeping, in keeping with the new building that's adjacent to its Sut's building, so. So that's, um, pretty much my presentation on the building, and I think that we should talk about the easement for a second, so, I don't know if Sut or Dick, if you wanna explain that.
Sure, we're, um, well, the.
Come on, I'd just, sorry, let's come on and say your name and, my right to vote.
Um, I'm Sut Jolly, I'm the proposed owner of the, the new building. Uh, we've been, the abutter is, um, Ansel Wright from the medias, uh, most of them are here, and so we've been engaged in discussions to try and figure out exactly what we're gonna be doing on that, and we're very, we've got an agreement in principle, and you may wanna speak to that about, uh, about what we can do in that, in that space, which is we, we're gonna, I, I think they're okay with us going over the five feet into, uh, into the passage way, um, and that it doesn't interfere with the, the rights that pass and repass to their building.
Or anything else in your presentation?
Um, no, I can take questions.
Um, so, uh, again, like the previous application, the reason we're seeing this one is because the entire building is not thirty-foot high.
Well, again, these are new drawings, so what you, in your plan, it didn't come thirty feet at all. Um, I think it's, it's an average measurement, but I'm just gonna double check, and it's so we revised plans to show what the percentage of the roof height is. So, um, I, you know, I was just starting to do that actually, um, just to make sure the definition per height was, um, I understood what the definition of it was, and also to probably ask more questions about the percentage of the overall roof.
Right.
That does exceed thirty feet.
Yeah, and I don't know that percentage right off the bat, I didn't, didn't think about it.
I think the only thing that would, um, really, um, address would be determining whether or not the buildings had to be connected so that it's an addition to existing building as opposed to a building on its own without it connected.
We are connecting it, it's a little bit hard to see right there, but, um, we're just connecting it with a little roof to cover the parking space, so you can see it right there. So this is a parking space right here that goes to that house, um, and then it'll get a roof that they're covering there, or patch it, but we're still gonna carve out a separate block for, um, this new structure.
So, I guess, uh, there's two questions in our, what proportion of the roof has to be over thirty feet for it to be an issue for us?
Right.
And then what is the definition of a connector? Does it, uh?
Anything that's attached, it can be, the building, I already went through the building, I'm sure, to, basically, they got here initially because it was a connection, and therefore it could be viewed as an addition. Um, and then it could fall under the provision that allows for additions to existing structures if anything else is thirty feet. Um, and so that's where there would have to be a provision that it was actually connected and was technically an addition in order for it to continue forward, but once it's over thirty feet, or, you know, it might be fifty percent of the roof, I don't know, I'm gonna double check, then you wouldn't necessarily need that connector.
So for the planning, the, the, the planning boards decide if, if the, enough of the percentage of this roof is over thirty feet, we, wouldn't we have to come before it?
Right, right.
So, uh, I guess, can you figure it out before we get?
Yeah.
Okay, so what we'll do is while Carol's looking at that, we can do other questions as well. So.
Well, I can tell you, just from looking at that elevation, it's probably one-third of the roof is above thirty feet. That's a good guesstimate, I think.
Yeah, but if the buildings are connected, don't we count the other building also?
Don't know.
Why don't we do, Carol's gonna be looking it up, why don't we do questions and let her, let her look into that?
I, I'm, I'm confused by the easement. Who owns the, the property?
Media Education Foundation owns the property, but there's an easement that goes through it, so they're negotiating a, um, some type of, something that allows Sut to go into that easement.
Where are they negotiating on?
Condominium Association.
But I thought you said it's owned by North Hampton Education Foundation?
Media Education Foundation.
Don't they have to be involved?
But that, but that pretty much is Sut Jolly, so.
Oh, sorry.
It's his company.
Okay, okay.
Sorry, I, sorry, I didn't make that clear.
The only negotiations you have to do are with the abutter on the other side. Okay.
And so as far as the deed goes, it seemed like the only person, only property that had rights to that easement was the red house in the back of their, um, Ansel Adams?
Ansel Matt, yes. No, Ansel Wright, Ansel Wright. Two are saying, thank you.
Sut's about the other day, man.
All right, thank you. Um, other questions? Okay, um, so I think then, um, I guess the, Alex, or the, any of your group wants to speak to this issue in the evening, it seemed like there was, implied that you have all come to an agreement, is there an agreement in place?
There, there's not a, uh, we don't have a written agreement. We have been, uh, negotiating, drawing lines, uh, on the pavement. I think that we've come, I think that we're in principle, and if we don't have a document, there's been no, uh, assessment. I think it's fairly clear that we do have an easement, a right of easement to that. Um, Ansel Wright sold that, that lot to the city in eighteen seventy for the fire station, and it's very clearly marked in the deeds, uh, of, of passage, uh, right away there. Um, that being said, uh, you know, it's, it's a big building, it's gonna shade our building, um, we have mixed feelings, but, uh, Sut's a good neighbor, we're in agreement with the principles of building up in the city, of infill, uh, that's a tight little neighborhood back there, so, uh, our principal concern really was access to the building we need. Uh, we have two, there are two parking places in there, and if you look at.
Two parking spaces that go with your building?
Yes, in, not parking, they're interior parking, two covered, two garages in our building.
Oh, oh, okay, and the easement is what provides access to the.
Provides access, because actually, you know, if you can build to your property line, then, uh, then Kathy Borowski's old building could actually build, if you see where our corner is. It's really crucial that we have that space.
So just, so those last two parking spots in the new design are for your, powers on your property?
We're, we're going to own that, at least that's my understanding, that Sutt's going to transfer ownership of the land that's from his property line to our property line, down to.
Right here.
Right, to that north.
So you're saying this area is going to be transferred to you?
Yes, down to there, and then a line from that corner to our, to our tent. So how about sixteen feet there, sixteen or seventeen feet, which I, which I think is enough.
This rectangular area right here, basically from your property line, this way all the way up will become yours.
Right, and I assume we'll continue to have a right of passage across the major path.
This area here?
Yeah, well, of course, that area, right, yeah.
Now, because we can, I think the staff recommendation of this permit is that, I'll read it out loud, so we're ready. Here's it. Prior to issuing for a building permit, the applicant must show that resolution has been reached to construct in the right of way, either by amending the passageway, easement agreement, or by making legal representation by an attorney that he has the right to construct a shell. So I think there's two pieces to that. One is that you have to show that you have the legal right to build into that easement. And then the second part is that you have to show that you reached an agreement with the abutter, and that will be the condition of this permit. Does that, seem like it covers both sides of it? So the two pieces were that, because the applicant has to prove that they have the ability to build on that easement, that was one, and two, that the applicant has reached an agreement with the abutter, that was the second part. That's unclear. There was also a recommendation here that the staff recommends that the board allow a smaller footprint, with or without corresponding height increase, to enable a workable solution to the easement issue. So there's another condition that staff has recommended put in the permit.
Well, I don't think it's, I think that if they hadn't come to an agreement, that from your perspective, I don't think it would hold for some business architecture. But given that the issue up till today had been the height, I think that if you all felt comfortable with the new infill for this building, that it probably wouldn't make too much of a difference if we're smaller to accommodate an agreement on easement. But it sounds like that's true, so I don't think that one's necessary.
Any other questions from the board, see the board?
Is it possible to read the essential business architecture?
Right area for review, or?
The staff recommendations?
The staff recommendations, that's okay.
Yeah, I mean, they were basically, the issue was similar to you all, except that in the context that if the design did change, I think they didn't want to see that. So that really, there weren't really any conditions, except that if they couldn't figure out a solution before you could see the final design, you probably want to continue it, which is probably, should led down the path. The next point would be because it might materially change, you know, what your review is.
Tom, is this the final design?
Yes.
That was a quick yes.
No, it's just going to keep getting better. With time and age. The change I made recently to this is I lowered the whole height of the tower by ten inches, but that's.
Well, I do think it's a nice development from what we saw initially to where it is now. There's, architecturally, it's much, much nicer, and I do like how both buildings relate to each other. I did have a question about what it looks like from State Street, and whether that's part of our jurisdiction or not.
Well, if it's visible from State Street, yes, yes, I think it probably would be through the.
The parking lot.
I think you could see it down the end.
Right, right, I don't have a picture, I was just trying to see what was behind it.
Well, if you go to the site plan and see how much it projects in front of the property that you just reviewed, then you might be able to gauge, you know, if you go to your site plan, Tom?
Yeah, see that fence back there where those cars are parked? I guess that's a clear shot, that's State Street right there. Our problem with.
Oh, I was thinking Center Street, right there.
Our problem, oh, and that back building is not the right height, right behind that building. I don't have a lot of flexibility on that back elevation.
Because it's a zero lot.
Yeah, that's it, in the lower left. It can't have any windows on it, and it has to be non-combustible. So I can have some trim, that's about it. With stucco base, so.
Can you just explain why for people?
Once you get closer to the, closer than three feet from the property line, you can't have any windows at all unless they, well, no, you can't have any openings at all. Because the theory is that fire, if you had a fire in your building, or a fire in the neighboring building, it could go out the windows, which it often does, because windows explode, and, or firefighters knock them down. And the fire spreads quickly that way through windows. So, yeah, I wish I could do more with that, but I can't.
No, I wasn't asking if, I was wondering just if we had jurisdiction looking from that direction or not.
So you'll see that little parapet there with a little, to the left, if you're looking at that lower left elevation, there's a parapet with roof deck beyond it, and then a raised portion, which is that enclosed space.
And so did that change from, it was a fence before, is that true? Was it a fence before?
Well.
Or is it, is it solid now?
It, the old house, it was built as a post and panel system. What we'd like to do now is have it be a real parapet, a wall that's continuous with the wall below it. So you can see in the plan, the upper plan is the third floor. Most of it is stair, and then there's the front part that's a little penthouse place, and then you can see the roof deck.
What was this big tower that was, is that a picture that?
That's the fire station.
Oh, that's the fire station.
On that upper right-hand diagram, Tom, left of the stair and down, that, the area with lines on it, is that a overhead trellis or something?
No, that's just like a wooden roof deck.
Then what's the remainder of the roof?
It would be rubber roof. Maybe solar panels.
No planting and greenery?
Not metal, that's, that's part of the aging and getting better process.
Green roof, you don't have to do much.
I know, yeah. You'd never see it, it'd be behind the parapet.
I realize I have no jurisdiction to say that, but I'd still make the plug.
I just want, I'm just going back to the fencing, there's fencing on the existing building, is that true?
Yeah, that was a budget-saving measure. It was originally a real. The parapet being, being a post and panel system, yeah. It was originally a parapet, and then we changed it to the fencing to save some money. Yeah, what it is, is it's, it's wood posts with party panel applied to it, and the stucco finish. And it was painted, and it originally looked exactly like the color of the stucco below, but the colors have changed over time, so.
Oh, so it's not a transparent kind of, like a metal fencing or something?
Maybe I'm not sure what you're looking at.
That's here.
Oh, no, that's all solid, that's solid.
And it's solid on the existing?
Yes, right, yeah, that's all solid, yeah.
That's it? Um, we should probably open up a public, just for public comment, so.
Can I come back?
Yep.
Well, I represent two abutters. They can't be here, like I said before, my name's Bill Arnold. And I'm all for advancement, and, you know, I mean, I work the airport. We've done a lot of improvements down there, a lot, and there's a lot to come.
You're going to get solar panels there, aren't you?
They're already up, we're feeding the grill, we're feeding the grid like you don't know what. The meter's turning backwards, which is really unusual for an airport. We have, we've done a lot there. I'm just one of the people that service these airplanes that go over your head every day, and have been doing it for dag on near thirty years, silent. But I happen to know a couple of young ladies that, one, the reason I'm here is because they're working. One's a nurse at Pooley Dickinson Hospital, and the other's a musician. They have a concert this weekend in Springfield, they have to have rehearsals. So they asked me to come and speak their mind. I've been in this situation, and I looked at the plans, and I've seen that they've come up with an agreement with the abutter, and one of the things was the distance away from his property, which has to do with the easement, which I can understand, if you can't get to his property, it's not a problem. The other is that, I don't know why it is grayed out, but Thirty-Five State Street on that plan is grayed out. It doesn't represent a depiction of how the actual property is. There is, and there's one picture in here. Why don't you go back to the picture? It's the one where you're looking back from Mason Street through the easement.
We can see the tree.
Right, we can see the tree, yep.
Look behind you, tree.
There it is, right there. If you see that, it's a peak house. That red door is actually an access to Thirty-Five State Street, Apartment D. Around the other side is Apartment A, where you can't see it. What they did in the original plan when they graded out is they made a block. It's not a block, it's, it stepped down as apartment, and there's a screen port and a, a view of the, of the area. That building, were it to be constructed, if you were to stand on, and there's another picture in here of the staircase. If you were to stand on that staircase and reach your hand out, you'd be able to touch that building. Yeah, see, there's a staircase. Okay, so now you could stand on that staircase, the staircase is wood, by the way. It's a press board, you know, that stuff they make, patios out of.
Like a Trex or something?
Yeah, it's that, and underneath that, where the trees, that's, the tree is actually hiding this equipment. First off, let me say that there's two businesses in that building. One is Thirty-Five State Street, which is sort of a psycho business that has, you know, they care, it's not, it's not interfering with them because they have no windows or anything on the back. And the other one is Robinson Real Estate, he has no problems with it. The problem is with not the business people who are there, it's with the residents who are there. One of the residents is working, the other residence, which is A, is working, D is working, and they're just in the area. The C resident, he moved to California, that's the, he moved to California, so he doesn't, I don't even think he knows that this is going on. But he actually owns property in that condominium. So what I'm saying is that if you put that building five feet from that area, I would be able to stand on that porch and take my hand, touch that building.
Just that, we're looking at the plan, I think, you might be thinking the building goes over a part, the building.
No, it doesn't, the building, I've seen the plans, and on the plan, it says five feet, it's at an angle, so it goes from five feet.
Oh, right, I mean, it might be five.
We're talking about the back wall.
Right, but I'm talking about if the, the wall is here, the wall is going to go up here. It's not going to go anywhere near the stairs, the wall is going to go up, see where these cars are? One, two, three, four, this is the fifth car, and the building will be over this car, so it'll go up like this. And it'll be twenty-five feet from here to there, that'll be open.
The building is going to be approximately ten feet from his property.
Seventeen feet.
Seventeen feet, well.
Or it's going to be just to the left of the tree.
Right here?
Just to the left.
That's not how the, that original plan was, not like that.
Yeah, it's not going to go anywhere near the stairs.
So what you're saying, if I can understand this correctly, I'm very thick, you have to tell me, several times, because somebody's going to ask me this. The edge of that building, where that tower is that he's been talking about.
Is here.
Will come, will come, I would be able to see that door.
Yeah.
That got entrance and exit to the D from the street. The only thing that'd be missing is that tree.
Yes, and the building, the part of the building, if Alex is correct, will go to the left of the tree, so.
Just to the left.
Just to the left, so right here, so that whole stairway, that door is going to be.
It's going to be open. Now, you can't see it, but if you look very closely, and you look midways to tree, that's a studio. And if, right there where you have that, that's a studio with several windows. Now, I, I don't know about that, I know for a fact that that door was a real problem. I mean, it was, these people were having a conniption about that. And what I don't understand, me being a neutral person, and I've been involved in a lot, I worked at other airports, I've been involved in a lot of airport and construction, usually, anybody who's in the abutter, someone representing the builder contacts them and gives them a model or something to go by, other than a, no?
No, you just have to get notified that there's something, that there's a hearing, but there's, the builder, the applicant doesn't have to go to every abutter for the model and show it.
I have to go to him, but that's because he had easement. Okay, I understand now. So that's my, that's not, that's their concern, I don't, it's a concern, I don't know what's going to happen, but that's, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
I did, in terms of getting in touch with people, I was in touch with, with all the abutters, including.
She called you, I was there when she did it.
But I'd sent her the plans, so I wanted everyone to be really aware of what was going on.
The plan, excuse me, the plan looked different, okay, it was closer to his property, am I right or wrong?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, it was just an earlier version.
Okay.
We were after with the tape a lot.
Okay, yeah, all right, yeah, all right.
So any other members of the public here speak this way?
The utilities are all going to be in that, in the first floor and that back. Like, there's not going to be anything in that roof? Air conditioning? Is there?
If there was something, something like an air conditioning, condensing unit or something like that. Oops, sorry.
Hidden by the screen, man. It's on the parapet, eh?
Yeah, it would probably be in the lower parapet section.
Noise is an issue. We're right up, you know, we look right out of that.
Yeah, I think Sat's very aware of that because of fly-by-night condensing, giant roof ducts, and it's right next to it, so. He's not, try not to do that to somebody else.
Any other questions from the public? There was one, you want to read, what did you determine about the roof?
Yeah, so the roof, the definition of height is taken from the, is the vertical distance from the average finished grade to the top of the structure of the highest roof beams of a flat roof, or the deck of the mansard roof and level of loss. But this is a flat roof, so it would go to the highest roof beam of a flat roof. So if that, in fact, if the highest roof beam is at thirty-two feet, then that'd be okay. The, meaning you wouldn't need a special, they wouldn't need a special permit for the height. There is another item, actually, I just noticed, Tom, it looks like the setback change. We talked a lot about the five-foot setback, I don't know if that's been addressed again.
Which setback?
A maximum of a five-foot setback.
From where, from right away?
This one?
I don't, still don't know what setback would be.
The front setback.
Right there, it's a, you showed a ten-foot setback?
Oh, oh, okay.
And it's supposed to be five.
So if there's a building, because there's certainly a public hearing, you got, the board could grant a special permit for the setback.
Oh, okay.
From the front lot line.
Actually, we have changed that, I'm sorry, that's, that's gone, gone back and forth. It's now only two feet, the setback is only two feet, I'm sorry. But there's been a lot of negotiations about the property boundaries that happened. So now we're, and I'll give you this plan, but we're basically two feet off of the, the structure is two feet off of the property on, on all sides except for the rear, the rear is in the corner, right up against it, so.
So let's just talk about that for just one second. So if the roof, the flat part of the roof is at thirty-two feet, as has been proposed, and the front lot line is two feet, not ten, there really isn't a reason for the planning board. and the front lot line is two feet, not ten, there really isn't a reason for the planning board to vote.
Right, so it's not needed for a special permit.
But you can't change the plans. These have to be the plans. So if you change the plans again and the building drops below thirty feet or that front setback drops below five.
Right.
Yeah.
Then you do. So are these plans done?
Those two elements will not change at all. If, I, if the design changes somewhat, I, I know that I have to come back for a review from these guys.
Or if it changes to the point where you have to come back to us.
Right, yeah. I don't wanna come back to the planning board, we don't wanna change the setback or the height.
Right, okay. So as it stands right now, then the plan is, we have to take a vote. So the DPW comments are applied for the subdivision permit or we have to vote on those?
Well, no, you don't have to. I, I mean, there are basic technical standards about the waterline, um, valve, mort shaw, and that kind of thing. So they would get, they would be reviewed when they came for a building permit anyway. So these issues will be part of a special permit, necessarily.
So then, uh, do we...
So we could just have subdivision decide what they wanna do.
Right, so, but, but for the, since we've opened the hearing, do we have to just, do they withdraw their...
Yeah, I think it's the cleanest way is to withdraw because the permit's no longer necessary.
So we're gonna ask you guys to request a withdrawal of a permit from the planning board and we can vote on that?
In writing or here?
No, you can do it right here.
Oh, can I request a withdrawal from the hearing, please? A good permit, permit.
So that's what we're gonna vote on. So I wanna give the subdivision argument, but is there anything else that you...
I, I just, um, the north and south elevations, did those change as well?
Uh, that's north. So this is actually what, uh, the Ansel Wright building owners will be looking at. And then the south, nobody will ever see it because it's basically right up against, but that's it. It's a big stucco wall.
Anyone?
I have one last question. And so that blue building that we saw in the back, was there a door that would be...
Yeah, that's my question.
And I, I, I know this doesn't have anything to do with your building because you've created the fire separation, but does that now cause a situation where they have to seal off all the openings?
I, I don't think so. I, I, it's up to the building inspector. Because sometimes buildings are built right up against other buildings and the old one has windows and they're not asked to seal them up. So I don't know what the code requirements are.
Would anybody like to make a motion if there's no other discussion?
Uh, I, a move that we approve is submitted as soon as...
I hear what?
Yeah, can I close the public hearing?
So I guess we need a motion to close the public hearing.
A second, yeah.
On favor?
Now I move that we accept the application to submit and approve.
A second.
Whoops, hang on.
We screwed up again.
Well, the obligation as submitted is as early as was submitted. So you need to abide by the plan.
As presented.
Um, and then, um, probably be appropriate, um...
To request, John.
To request the condition about the easement be, so that you know that's what's gonna be built and it's not gonna change essentially, that the agreement is...
But is that even our permit?
Well, I, if, if they, uh, if they wanted to change the, and we're voting to approve it as it's presented tonight, so if they change it, we have to see it again anyway.
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to amend my motion, though. That I move that we approve the submission as presented tonight and we require plans, uh, to the same.
A second.
On favor?
So we're gonna be in motion to close our public hearing.
Uh, so the applicant has asked to, um, can, can we have to have a motion to adjourn first?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
So we're all done tonight?
Yep. So the only thing we have to do is go down, um, say withdraw the permit. So I guess a motion to accept. Good to you, man. All right, all set.
Let's make the way out, we have more discussion to make. Opening a public hearing scheduled for seven forty-five requested by Oak Ridge Road LLC for subdivision amendment, special permit amendment to the Oaks to clarify permit conditions and lot references regarding the lot layout and clarify the terms and stuff required in such a higher school.
Yeah, I don't know how to close that out. I got my thing.
Hi, I'm Ted Parker, I'm representing the applicant. Um, when this project was originally permitted in two thousand and three, the original applicant, uh, the, the assumption about the flow rates, water flow rates in the neighborhood was, uh, is that they were very low. And, uh, the original applicant offered as a condition of approval that all the houses in the subdivision be, uh, sprinkled with a residential, with a NFPA approved thirteen D sprinkler system. We had recently conducted fire flow tests, three fire flow tests. One last summer and two in the last eight weeks, all of which have indicated that we have more than sufficient fire flow to satisfy current subdivision regulations, which would allow the houses that are served by municipal water to, uh, not need residential sprinkler systems. We're asking to be, to have those houses that are served by municipal water system to be relieved from the requirement. That was a, a condition of the original permit that they be sprinkled. It's pretty simple. I think, uh, we went to the fire department to discuss it with them and Chief Duggan, uh, agreed that it was a reasonable request and the DPW reviewed it and also tied it with a reasonable request.
Anything else?
No.
Questions, keep going, right.
I think it's a reasonable request.
That's not a question.
My question is why would I go against the EPOs that they...
My question is does anybody else think it's a reasonable request?
I do.
I think it's a reasonable.
Well, why, anyone here from the public wanting to speak on this? All right, somebody like to make a motion?
You have to close the public hearing.
Uh, can I have a particular question? Is this a subdivision thingy?
It is a thingy.
I'm sorry, non-exclusive, uh, Mr. Murray.
Uh, do we have a second? Can we have a vote? Everyone have a vote?
I want to have a second.
So it looks like the way we wanna do this is to approve the changes and reissue the permit with all conditions merged into one format with the corrected lot references. Um, so do we have that or will make that... Yeah, it's too long to present it to you. But basically, it's, it's really administrative, I have to say. None of the conditions really changed but for clarification that, um, it's gonna be those lots that are noted in the applications and then renumber, renumber them after the play. Are the ones that require a separate first question. Okay. Somebody like to make a motion?
I move to approve the request by Oak Ridge Road LLC for subdivision amendment and special permit amendment to the Oaks to clarify permit conditions and lot references to revise lot layout and clarify parcels that require onsite private suppression of parcels originally located on map thirty-six dash six. The date of Oak Ridge Road forms that.
All better? All set, thank you very much.
Why don't we have that back, so we're holding it there?
So, John, you trying to plug in?
Yeah.
All right, let's wait in the top here.
What side am I sitting on? Cause you're retired. And then, um, are you, are you...
No, no, I'm just, I'm just... Yeah, so it's, uh...
Uh, he's in Boston, I didn't see him.
Uh, not every day.
Sure.
I have to go in, uh, I usually go in Monday to Wednesday. Now Monday, pretty much.
Oh, yeah.
Just talking around the floor.
Oh, yeah. So then, uh, then we'll play, uh... So was yours a, is it power point or just something?
I believe that we, well, yeah, so we may have a big power point here. Oh, this is just potatoes, there's five sheets. Yep, okay.
All set? So I'd like to open up, uh, hearing scheduled for eight P M. Continu- continuation of Beachwood Single Family Homes at Olander and Ford Crossing by Wright Builders for cycling approval for six single-family house lot on Olander Drive and Ford Crossing, Villa Chilum, zip and map by E thirty-one C by seventeenth, advertised March twenty-ninth and April fifth. Um, this is a continuation of the hearing we had, um, last, two weeks ago. And I think, um, the only remaining issue was the sidewalks.
Yes, sir.
I think everything else, from what I remember, uh, everything else is pretty much okay. There was the question, but I need to contact the post office about the numbering.
Right.
I'm not sure if that should be involved, but...
Until we have, they won't, um, talk to us until we have a permit.
Oh, okay.
They want, they want to know that lots have been accepted in the process.
All right.
Okay, well, thanks for having us back. It's, it's nice to be back.
You've got to be too.
First lie you told me.
Anyway, um, the matter that was before you last time that, that caused some consternation, we apologize for that. The, um, the walkway resolution that you see on the site plan, uh, behind you or to the side of you, um, shows, shows that resolution. There is a, an eight-foot walkway on the left side of the plan, which is the west side of our property, that will, that continues down through and through the Beachwood, uh, park, or the Beaches Park, down to Mojer Street. Um, it's been agreed that a five-foot, uh, concrete walkway will, will run on the, on the north side of the park in front of our first three homes. And that, uh, on the far side, on the north side of Ford Crossing, that sidewalk has been widened to eight feet. So that it, uh, conforms to an agreement for a multi-use path. So, uh, that's what all the excitement is about. And, um, it's a good resolution. You know, there, there aren't ten-foot sidewalks, which was a subject of subconsternation about scale. Um, but, and, uh, but they're not four-foot, so they're, they clearly offer that, that central spine that's been, been talked about. And I think there was a discussion with the staff and, uh, and Mass Development about the further development of linkage paths, uh, in the inner campus areas. We're, we're negotiating, just so you know, Wright Builders is negotiating with Mass Development for this area to the, uh, to the west of Beachwood. It will be back to CU in a little while, uh, with twenty-six or twenty-eight attached units there. And just today, we were on-site, um, looking at the options for, for connecting these spines in an intelligent way. So I think, uh, the consternation that you experienced last, uh, three weeks ago has actually stimulated, uh, the awareness and the need to solve the walkway pedestrian access things, you know, integrally at the beginning of the process rather than, than, uh, than sort of adding them in at the end. So that's, that's a constructive outcome if you can take any pleasure in that. I'd invite you to do so.
So Jeff, did you wanna add any items? I, Jeff's wires from, uh, Richard's eyes.
Yeah, I don't think we received some email comments from DPW, um, in response to some revised plans showing these walks that we submitted last Thursday. Um, there were a couple of minor, um, utility-related items, um, that were addressed in plans that were, you know, provided to them, um, this afternoon. But I did speak with Dave Valetta, um, and he seemed to, you know, be satisfied with all the revisions that were made, so.
Did the DPW have any comments that they sent to you? Was we had, uh, by basis of plan, you have to, for the applicant?
Yeah, no, they got them, so there was a lot of back and forth.
Yep.
Um, crossing emails, but they addressed all the, so DPW did send comments. I sent them on to the applicant, the applicant's addressed them.
And one of the big, one of the big issues just in, is, um, in speaking with Dave, is he had forgotten that that common drive was actually part of Mass Development's submission. And so that, you know, there was some coordination going on and so just the division of, you know, whose responsibility was what. But it was, you know, he was, he was satisfied with what we, um, agreed upon, so. All those, all those items that came forward to you last time about copper instead of plastic, that, all that stuff was resolved.
So there's, the DPW thing, DPW had to sign up on this or they signed up as part of the subdivision?
No, so they don't have to sign up on this. The only thing was that, um, in terms of DPW was that the stormwater calculations were all addressed through just the stormwater piece. Doug, you're fine with, um, that piece of it. So they signed off on their piece for the required piece of it, um, before you can close your hearing. So definitely.
Um, and I'm gonna say, you know, uh, thank you, and I know Beth, you've been involved in these conversations. I think it's great to hear that you guys are gonna look at this like a holistic look at the paths through this area. I think that'll be, go a long way to making a smoother and faster permitting process as we all saw from our last meeting. It was, you know, we, we, it's very important to us. That aspect of that whole development is very important to us. So, um, thank you for, you know, looking at that. The only question I had, and just one, is, uh, the sidewalk, the north sidewalk on Ford Crossing is gonna be expanded. Do we have to amend the subdivision because of that?
I talked to Carolyn about this and if we can, we're gonna submit the mylaws with the corrected eight-foot sidewalk and, and by your signature on that.
Okay, so you don't need a vote to amend that. We're not, that's not necessary.
Right, so what's gonna happen is, as with any subdivision, the applicant, once they get approval for a subdivision, has to come with you with the, um, final drawings that incorporate all the conditions and, um, there's the mylaws that, the originals that get recorded through registry of deeds. But before they can be recorded, the whole, the majority of the planning board has to sign. So you remember signing through all those sheets before. So what will happen is they'll incorporate this design change into the final mylaw before it comes to you. And that should be coming, I mean, given that you wanna construct this summer, it's gonna come relatively soon. So you will see the redesign of the north side in those mylaws and by your signature, you will be essentially signing off on that new design.
But so even though this isn't part of the site, this, what we're voting on tonight requires that.
Right, right, okay. So essentially, you wouldn't sign off on the mylaws if they weren't there?
Okay, that's our potential.
And they couldn't build this without building the subdivision. They can't build the subdivision through, through the mylaws.
Great, thank you.
Uh, and there was one other piece of it, um, the declaration of open space conservation area for Beechtree Park, uh, I have a copy of.
Right.
And, um, I think, I can't remember what we, how we decided last time, but I think we already said this has to be recorded before the fourth house. How did you... we already said this has to be recorded before the fourth house, how did you say?
You had the fifth last time, yeah.
Okay, so this, this, uh, covenant, is that what?
Yeah, it's a declaration and conservation restriction, essentially, so you can, that, I, I, there were five, I think, recommended conditions from, essentially from the last time, um...
Can I just read them out?
Um, yes, uh, so, um, so actually, let me, let me explain a little bit too, so in the original, um, special permit that was granted, there, um, because you just looked at this sort of area site plan, there's a condition number twenty-seven actually that says that prior to construction or build out of any of the lots, a full detailed site plan has to be approved by the planning board, because at that point it was, you know, the big picture. So technically, the beach park lot has to get reviewed by site plan. The only thing, the, the big thing in the site plan here would be that bike path connection and then recording, as they've shown that this is not gonna be built out, that it's really gonna be preserved, so I would suggest that in this approval for the sixth lots, you can also accept, um, that this would also stand for the site plan for the Beechtree Park, because you've got the layout of the path going all the way down to Moser Street and the, the draft covenant restrictions, so, um, I would, I made a recommendation that, you know, as part of your approval, um, that, um, it constitutes compliance with site plan requirements, um, on that lot, the park lot.
So you have to ask for two separate votes, we're gonna do this in one...
Right, right, I think it could be as one package, and then, uh, so then the condition one is the eight-foot wide bike path, bike head, um, path from Ford Crossing to Moser Street, the construction prior conditions of the fifth building permit for the site. Alternatively, um, an escrow in the amount of the cost for construction could be posted in form suitable to the opposite planning development. If, for instance, construction wasn't quite completed by the fifth, issue of the fifth building permit, you still could hold out money, um, to ensure that that comes forward. And then prior to completion of the six house lots, the conservation restriction reported as defined by NPL one eight thirty-one and defined in submissions by Mass Development are recorded. Prior to issuance of building permit for any lot, a public access sign should be posted at the sidewalk entrance south of the site, at the Olander sidewalk and at the Ford Crossing as the entrance to the, at the entrance to the proposed park. Just to clarify that it's not just private, you know, private walk. And that the sidewalk and trail links above in the property shall have a public access easement recorded and held by the city on terms acceptable by the city, easement shall be recorded prior to the issuance of the fifth building permit. And, um, that the sidewalks and the bike path connections are cement concrete.
Just, if I could just comment one piece about that, the fifth building permit. Carolyn, I talked about the, the timing of this, and since we're gonna be, uh, involved in the property to the west, uh, if you walk that area, you, you know that the, the Beech, Beechtree Park slopes down to Moser Street, and, uh, the contouring of an accessible pathway there relative to the trees and the existing grade and the development of the property next to it is gonna be a delicate matter, and it can be done with finesse, or it can be done sort of, uh, perfunctorily, and we prefer the former. That said, we have a contract with Mass Development that requires them to have that path built by, by September first, but in the ensuing months, uh, we now have the opportunity to do that perhaps in a better integrated way, and so that was the thought, I think that Carolyn had about the escrow, is that, that if we get to that point and it's not done, the reason it's not gonna be done is because trying to do a better job, not somebody's dragging their feet.
Right, and I, I mean, uh, not speaking for the entire board, but, um, again, I think what's important to us is that there is a plan, a holistic plan, cohesive plan, so if, if some of that, part of that plan is to give you all the flexibility to do it well, rather, I certainly don't want to be the person to shove a sidewalk by your throat and say, "Build it." You know, we've had sidewalks to nowhere already, so...
Well, just thank you for understanding that, because, you know, we, time marches on and these things get cast in stone and, and, uh, codified, and, uh, we have a good rapport with Mass Development about this issue, and, but it's new news over the last three weeks, and we are gonna be involved in that next property.
Right, and I think you all from the last two hearings have heard how, you know, how important that, that aspect of the development is to all of us, so...
We aren't gonna show you any buildings when we come back, we're just gonna show you the walks.
Yeah, that's all.
Is there any danger?
They'll just gray blobs and walks.
Is there any danger to the root systems of the trees, and, and when you think about a perfunctory sidewalk versus...
No, no, the, the trees are protected, and their, um, landscape designers that they use, Beals and Thomas for this, are, are the ones who did the tree inventory originally up there, so, no, that's not the issue.
It's hard to see where the, you know, path actually goes.
The one to the left that bends out, has to bend out, uh, and turn back in order to get some additional run distance to, to maintain the pitch, and where it comes back in, it's gonna have to tuck down near some buildings that we planned there, and those are people's backyards, which sort of terrace up, so that's got to be done in a nice way. I mean, it can be, I mean, that, that's gonna work.
And that was, that was the last plan that was, I sent out this afternoon, I don't think you had a chance to see it, but it showed the rest of that all the way to the... Yeah, all the way to the Moser Street.
Uh, any other questions or comments from the board then? Do you motion to close the public hearing? Oh, sorry, I should actually ask first, uh, is there anybody here from the public that'd like to speak to this issue? Okay. All right, one second. Um, there. All right. Any comments or questions from the board? Yes, I think it was a far, far better thing to get to remade the building stock. Just as if, Mark, you are ineligible to vote, and you, you are ineligible to vote, so do we go to Mark? You were here the last week, weren't you?
Yes.
No, this is... Right, so you can vote, so you'll be voting for Mark in this hearing, so Mark, just sit on your... Instead of that. Any other discussions then? All right.
Thank you, thank you everybody, thank you so much.
Oh, hold on a second, I forgot one thing.
I moved approved Beachwood's Single Family Homes at Olander, Ford Crossing by Wright Builders for Cyclane Approval, the six single-family house lots on Olander and Ford Crossing, Village Hill, that by D thirty-one C seventeen, including the layout of Beechtree Park and the plant, the site plan, with the following conditions as read, that address the eight-foot sidewalk and/or escrow for the fifth building, our completion, uh, of the recording of conservation restriction, public access sign, sidewalk rail easement, and cement.
Beautiful. Is there a second? Marilyn, second? Paul, fifth? How are you doing? All right, twenty-five minutes. Other, expansion of... Right here.
He's got, he's got thirty seconds.
What we can do to the next thing, I want you wanting to add, I want to start, I think I told everybody about, you know, the planning board's, and I'm a liaison, I'm in the preservation committee, and it's a wonderful committee, and I just want to encourage somebody who's got a real interest in that, but...
Who conducted the meeting for you last week?
What?
Who conducted the meeting for you last year?
Downey Myers is the vice chair.
They did a job.
He's awesome.
He's great.
Is he one of the guys who's been on since the beginning?
What?
Is he the guy, he's been on since like day one?
Yeah, he's been on a lot.
And he's also school committee?
Yeah.
He's on the school committee, yeah.
And, boy, he's, he's a councilman, he's a councilman.
Right, right, but he's also on school committee.
He's on the councilman, the CPA and school committee?
Yeah.
And he has kids.
And he has kids.
And he's a teacher.
And he is.
The reg, the county also, actually, no, they have to give up all the other ones.
But anyway, the committee is gonna be really interested to have somebody come along.
So I, I, what I want to do tonight is have people take a, Karen, did everybody get the committee assignment?
I think they've...
Okay, um, I'm not gonna say let's do it tonight, but what I want people to do is, I know, um, with Catherine leaving, we have something from CPA, CPC, and Devin, you expressed an interest, I'm not sure if you're still there.
I do, I feel like I belong on transportation parking, but I've also done that for the whole link to come up here, and so it might be a big switch.
Well, we are gonna have one new member, there was a woman, Sarah Youngwood, is it Sarah? I think so.
Yeah, she's been appointed.
I wasn't sure, I knew she went in for an hour. I don't know if she's gonna...
She hasn't come back yet.
Come back yet.
She recommended by the man, and I didn't know.
I'm not sure if she's a lawyer. She'll express to the... So we do have, so we do have one new, uh, person, so I'm not sure what her interests are, but, um, I think if you decide you want to do the CPA, I think then, you know, that's an open up a spot, and we're gonna, we can assign her, you know... Well, no, no, but as the, as the new person, she can pick up the lines. Right. Isn't she, uh, project manager for... Oh, no, we're almost gone.
So nice to see you back here. Comes in there, it's like, oh, no. I love you guys too.
So we are gonna have an opening on CPA, um, we are gonna have, that means we're also gonna have, if Devin does take it, then we have an opening on, um, transportation.
Evelyn.
And Marilyn, um, I didn't know if you'd let everybody know.
Yes, I did.
You did, okay. So, uh, Marilyn, uh, position Evelyn, do you want to just give everybody a briefing? What, Evelyn is a monthly meeting.
Evelyn is a monthly meeting, and it used to be actually quite interesting, and then it sort of, you know, it sort of went, uh, took, took it back, uh, and we actually haven't met, um, so I think with the transition of the new mayor and, uh, you know, one of the houses leaving, we, we haven't met for a really long time, but it's economic development, so it's a really important committee, a lot of our stuff goes through Evelyn.
That's what I thought, Evelyn has to sign off on certain things.
Yeah, they do, and it's, it's, it's been in the past, I was on it when I was the city councillor, and that's why I was interested in continuing, this is, you know, in very interesting stuff, um, relationship to economic development and land use in the city, so I would assume that it would be picking up steam as they, it's, you know, the committee's building, and, and, um, and I think the councillors are, Jean Tracy, Paul Spector, um, I think the word here.
Oh.
Yeah, I think I mean, uh, Amy Daniels is on there, so, and there's some questions on that, but it's a good committee.
So that's something...
It's set, I think, five to five thirty on, uh, Monday.
Oh, okay, so that's something for Monday.
Yeah.
And then, there's one on here, zoning revision committee, that's pretty much over, so that doesn't really affect us, so, um, the next meeting, Carolyn, do we have much on the agenda for our next meeting?
We just have one minor permit, and then I'd like to be nominating stuff.
And then let's do...
It's a continuation of Kensington State.
Not too quick. So what I'd like people to do then is, uh, we know there's Evelyn, CPA, transportation, at the next meeting, we're gonna make these decisions, I'm not sure, Jen, you're still at the housing?
Oh, yeah.
Randy, Mark, I think you said you're still interested in the capital improvements?
Yeah.
Andrew Tree, one of you?
Things is fine.
Yeah. I mean, Evelyn might be something that's interesting to do, but...
Yeah, Evelyn might be interesting, I have to think about whether I have to do another one.
Right, that's the, the timing is gonna be hard, so...
Just so you guys know, Evelyn is a non-voting member.
Yes, right.
Oh, our representative doesn't vote, right, okay. But they get the least...
Only the councillors vote.
Capital, right.
They sit at the big table.
Right there.
Okay.
I'm used to them, though.
Maybe, maybe I'll get promoted to full post or something.
We could talk a lot.
Why wouldn't he fill one of the slots if those we...
Because until you guys are gone, there's no slot, so...
Quite about right.
You only, yeah, eventually.
It's a mayor, yeah.
Yeah, but it's up to David.
It's up to David.
All right, so we have one, we have Kensington, and then we're gonna do assignments, so...
And then zoning stuff, the residential stuff, I think I'm gonna have it too.
All righty, Wayne, not that we don't want to see, but we want to get out of here.
Sure.
It's always good to see, because you don't show up to meetings anymore, why don't you show them?
Because it's a hospital for me? So, um, in your package, you got the preliminary plan for the extension of Elm Street Historic District, that's what we're here to talk about. So, um, the process is we have an historic district in Elm Street that goes basically from the edge of the high school, just east of the high school, to St. Mary's Church. We've had that for a decade or so, um, there's a lot of interest in expanding the district up to, to Round Hill Road, so now we just pass that, and see red is the existing district, and yellow is the proposed new district. The, the Elm Street Historic District Committee's been, or Elm Street Historic District Committee has been talking about this for about ten months, um, they adopted a preliminary report last week, last month, the process is that the public comment, it's a sixty-day public comment, it comes to you, it comes to Historic Commission, it comes to Mass of Sore, they then hold a public hearing on May twenty-first, and then they make a final recognition, city council, and the city council does whatever they want to do with it. So this is before you, to give you a chance of comments on it. So what the, the preliminary report concludes is, there should be something to preserve the history of Round Hill, um, something regulatory, two potential ways to do it, one is expanding historic district to go up Round Hill, the other is to get voluntary preservation, historic preservation, his, agreements from Clark School, um, for the most important properties. The idea is, a historic district has a lot of protection on all the buildings, but it's not absolute, doesn't stop someone from tearing down a building, doesn't stop a horrible building, historic preservation restriction would be on far fewer buildings, but it's much stronger. And so the report says we should be considering both those things in the process. The neighborhood, we definitely like, the neighborhood, other than Smith College and Clark School, we definitely like historic district, um, and the report's sort of saying we should be talking about this. So it's before you for, for that, the property, this includes a few private properties, although those properties are sort of mature, they're not going anywhere, includes some Smith College properties, and then mostly includes Clark School properties. Clark School has a prospective buyer, Opal Real Estate, and Opal is absolutely fine with historic district, because if Opal goes forward, they're gonna be doing it on National Park Service tax credits, historic preservation tax credits, and those, which would pay, you know, a few million dollars a project, in return for that federal money, those restrictions are so restrictive that they're much tougher than the local regulations, so from Opal's standpoint, it's fine. Clark School's, and we think the Opal deal will happen, Clark School's concern is, if the Opal deal falls through, it probably falls through because nobody can use the buildings, or it can use all the buildings, and so if Opal falls through, it may mean the markets just can't support the reuse of the building, and so Clark's worried, well, if you lose Opal, and then there's historic district in place, you know, it may be, actually make historic preservation more difficult to come to buildings. The time, so part of this is parallel strategy is, by the time council votes, we're gonna know if Opal's buying the property. If Opal buys the property, they're happy with historic district, the neighbors happy with historic district, and I'm assuming the city council will be happy with it. It's the fallback where I think is the most controversial, frankly.
There's one, one additional little caveat is that just last week, city councils took their first reading on the change to historic, um, buildings provision for educational and religious uses, so there is one piece of a potential puzzle that is already essentially in place, so if this takes forever to adopt or make changes, there is that other third fallback position, I guess I would say, so if reuse of buildings for Opal didn't work, then there's still the allowance by site plan approval to allow different uses of some of those buildings, but, um, so, you know, it's another way of protection.
Mayor position's always been sort of two things, from a staff standpoint, one is that you don't get historic preservation unless it's a, an economic return on doing the building, so the reason for zoning is to make sure that the buildings can be used hybridly. The second is... The second is, regulations are really important to encourage people to preserve the buildings, but that it's much easier when you have a mature district, so all the studies are, if you have a residential neighborhood, Historic Districts add value, cause most people are gonna keep their homes, there's a few idiots who wanna ruin it for everybody, and so Historic Districts are really valuable, it's a lot harder for surplus institutional properties, where, I mean, this happened to the state hospital, we lost a major redevelopment of the state hospital when, when on the, when on the national register, because somebody just wasn't interested in the risk of, of not being able to tear down buildings, and so that, that's why this is more difficult. Was that?
You tore them down, you would.
Right, how does the educational overlay affect, or does it, the Smith properties affect?
It doesn't really, because the Smith's selling surplus, so the educational overlay says, to the extent it's being used by any educational institution, so if Smith or someone buys the properties, they have enormous flexibility, but as soon as it becomes non-education, the underlying zoning is what applies.
And that applies to residential as well, I thought there was, it only applies to building use for education, not the rest of it?
No, it applies to supporting uses as well, but you know, so, so Smith, and, and anyway, Smith, it originally thought they're gonna sell the buildings slowly, it looks like they're now gonna be looking for a master developer to buy everything, other than Bedford, so Bedford Terrace is probably gonna sell individual buildings, the rest of the buildings, they're probably gonna wait for a master developer, and because they haven't begun to build the new dorms to replace them, that's still some number of years down the line, so Smith, we should be aware of, the main building that Smith has, I think it's called Tully Hall, which is surplus, um, Clark School is planning to actually lease, so Clark will be selling most of the buildings, they need a little more space, they're gonna lease that, um, so except for Bedford Terrace, Smith is a longer term thing, I've seen.
So, uh, are you just giving us a heads up, Wayne, or are you looking?
So you're, so we're required to give this to you, to you to make a recommendation, so you can make no recommendation, you can make any recommendation you want.
Make a recommendation even before you've had the public meeting?
Right, we're required actually, we're required to wait sixty days to give you and everybody else a chance to make recommendations, so we can't even go to the public here to have your chance to talk.
So you, would you like us to do it tonight, or you wanna?
I'd love to do it tonight if you're ready, but, you know, I mean, the key thing for me is, your, your sixty days runs out on May seventeen, so.
And obviously you're meeting to make twenty first.
Twenty first.
So I need you to do it by the seventeenth, if you wanna do it tonight, it's straight, but if you need more time, that's fine too.
Anybody wanna come back and make a statement?
This is me.
No, me.
This is me, so he's still timed.
Oh, May seventeen, oh, no. Well, actually, I mean, let's, I mean, what, does anybody have any questions or concerns about this, I mean, this is.
Maybe I don't understand it well, and I can't see anything that doesn't make sense, but I don't see why.
Well, the only thing that there was, what are the grand, so that whole area becomes Historic District, that means the neighborhoods have, that, there's a, there's a neighborhood committee, Elm Street Historic Committee, made up of members of the committee, of that neighborhood, but they don't have any ability to deny. It's not like central business.
Uh, no, it's actually strong in central business in some respects, so they have the absolute ability to deny demolition, to say, can't tear down a building whatsoever.
Not in just the one year, they can just, forever.
Forever, now, they do have to, there's a three step process, first you get what's called a certificate of non-applicability, which says the rules don't apply to you, some things are exempt, roof colors and those kind of things, second is certificate of appropriateness, which says a building's appropriate to the district, and the third is whenever they turn down certificate appropriateness, they automatically have to do what's called a circular hardship, there are some buildings which even though they're the most valuable buildings in the world and shouldn't come down, just can't be reused, so, so they can turn out a building, but they have to find that it's, the building's actually reusable.
But does it have design guidelines?
It does, it has design guidelines, so they also have a lot of flexibility for new buildings, what they don't, it's not a backward door approach for zoning, they can't limit a building by how massive it is or what they use it, nothing to do with use, they have nothing to do with trees, they have nothing to do with landscaping, um, they, they don't have to do with size of the building per se, except in how it's fit in with the district, how it, how design issues are, so, you know, Campus Center was a good example, Campus Center was discussed for a year, it was revised, Elm Street eventually approved it, but they would have been within their rights not to approve it, um, and they approved it in part because the earlier version was so much worse, but.
Good strategy, yes, all we're voting is to move it forward.
Right.
Yeah.
So, but I was just wondering, what are, what are the downsides of do, of doing this?
Um, if, so the downside to doing Historic District, if Opal doesn't buy the property, is it, it could have a chilling effect on investors, investors may say, look, I can save three buildings, I can't save all seven buildings.
So it's sort of, it, it acts as a constraint on this.
Right, right, so that, that's why at least for now, the recommendation is, let's look at both options, Historic District and Historic Preservation, so we've been negotiating with Clark School, saying, we think there's four buildings that are most critical, if you put Historic Preservation Restriction on those four buildings that face the street, then that might be not a.
Then we don't need the whole district.
Right, right, again, a lot of the neighborhood wants every building protected, um, they keep saying they wanna, you know, it's the same discussion you all have about special permits, in theory, the, the, the board can be really flexible and allowed change of uses, but it just scares away some investors, you know, I mean, so, you know, and, and particularly if Opal fails, then that sort of, I mean, cause Opal's a pretty good project, and I think if anybody can make it work, it's gonna be Opal.
And does the city want this big, a, an area of kind of constraint on development, does the city want this to be?
Let's fast forward, let's imagine Clark School's redeveloped, um, and you have mature uses there, then absolutely, those are really important buildings we should save. The fear for, so, so it should be protected and those buildings are great, the fear I have is, if we result in having empty buildings that eventually fall apart, we're not doing anybody any favors, and so my recommendation, which has knocked the neighborhoods, has been, we should do this parallel track, that Opal goes forward to a Historic District, if Opal doesn't do Historic Preservation Restrictions, the neighborhood wants to jump, or many people in the neighborhood wanna jump just to Historic District.
Does it take a certain number of neighbors to vote for it, just in council?
It just in council, it's a two thirds vote, so that's, you know, as a practical matter, like zoning, a two thirds vote means you need some consensus in council.
Yeah.
You know, and so, and Clark School gets this, and I suspect that if Clark School is really trying to work with us and preserve four buildings, they're less likely to get six votes to do Historic District.
What's the status of Opal?
They're, they're doing their due diligence right now, um, I'm assuming they're applying for you all, they need a site plan approval for the entire project, and possibly a special permit for two buildings, depending on the details of it, and they're going through their due diligence, I just had an appraiser stop by yesterday, so that's sort of an outside approach, I mean, from everything we could tell, their concept is valid, is, would work, they could, they could find these uses, they're gonna replace the condos that were law, I mean, replace the apartment rentals, but the high end apartments we used to have, that we've lost with some condo conversions in the last ten years, in essence, they'd be replaced, so think like DA Sullivan's school, which was pretty high rental, and they're now condos, so people who, you know, doctors who come to, for rotation to Bay State, who have money but don't wanna buy a place, there's not really a great market for them, so that's the mar, and, we think that market's real, the part that I'm suspicious about is, could you really fill seventy-five units in a couple of years? If you give a ten year build out, it's probably very realistic, if you need two years to make the numbers work, I don't think it's all realistic, and that's, I think a lot of the due diligence is still.
So, Wayne, what's the timing, so this, so May twenty first, this is, the discussion is to expand the Historic District, but between now and then, you're working with Opal on those four properties to get Historic Preservation, and if that happens, and this becomes, that's all that, that's what the city would prefer, at least those four buildings.
So if, well, I don't part with the city, cause there's so many different players involved, but if Opal's deal goes forward, at, at least from a staff standpoint, I think Historic District is great, if Opal's deal fails, then Historic Preservation for buildings is, is my recommendation.
I'm asking, where's the timing of the negotiations with Opal on those four properties, where is that in relation to May twenty first?
So we're not talking to Opal about the four properties, cause if they afford Historic District, we're all happy, we're talking to Clark School about the four properties, they're giving, if Opal walks, we'd be ready to go with that.
Would that interfere with the sale if they put in Historic Preservation?
So we would be ready to go, so if the sale of Opal happens, they wouldn't do Historic Preservation Restriction.
Oh, I see.
There's so much of this is based on Opal, and that's, I'm sorry, what did you say?
You know, part of it is, cause we're not privy to the deal, we had heard they were aiming to close in June, but we also heard they wanted a permit from you, and they haven't applied for it yet, so I, I'm assuming that means that things are being delayed, but no one told us that, I mean, you know, because, because they have to apply thirty days before you act, and then there's an appeal period after that, so they have to be at least two and a half months from closing, that's, that's my guess, but I just don't know.
And is this the last time Opal have to make a recommendation on this, or will this have to come back to us?
This is the last time you have to make a recommendation, obviously you're welcome to spend more time if you want.
But this is, you don't, it won't come back this before this to council or after the council?
Won't be referred out?
Won't be referred out?
Um, city council's not required to refer it after anybody ordinance committee, they may choose to, but the, the only order, unlike the zoning ordinance, which comes to you, Historic District ordinance is the only requirement for it to be, now, that doesn't mean they wouldn't refer it to you, but, and we haven't done this in so long, I don't, we're even more than.
That would be something that would come before end of year.
Yeah, and, and sadly, that would be a fair recommendation, if you wanna say you'd like it to be referred, I'm absolutely sure council would refer it to you if you asked them to, I'm not sure if they do, what they do if you didn't specifically ask them.
I'm not sure, I mean, honestly, I think it's a political, it'll end up being, it'll become a very political decision, and I think, and if people can weigh in, I think I'm fine voting today to move it forward, because I think if, as long as it works out and Opal is it, is the buyer, and they get these, that's fine, and then if Opal doesn't get it, there's another way to preserve some of those buildings, I'm fine with that as well, so I think.
Where, where does that leave the Historic District proposition? I mean, you're talking about preserving the four buildings, I'm in favor of the whole Historic District also.
I think what's being asked is to go to maintain both possibilities going forward on parallel.
Is that what you're asking?
Yes, but, but just be clear, the only reason Opal would do four, I mean, I'm sorry, the only reason Clark School would agree to four buildings is if it was instead of Historic District.
Right.
And I, I may not disagree again if Opal buys the property, the question is, if they don't, if they don't, so, yes, it might at some point be a decision point of one versus the other.
Doesn't that make it less valuable to Opal, really?
Which way?
Anytime you tie their hands.
Right, so Op, so, so that, so the final, no document actually be signed until we knew one way or another about Opal, so if Opal buys the property, it wouldn't be in Historic Preservation Restriction, and they're not worried at all about Historic District.
Because Opal is gonna get this, this.
They're gonna make a change to the.
And they're gonna have a form where we say.
Say, Opal, say it, the, the whole project flows and Opal wants to dump it in thirty-five years.
So that's why Opal's, oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, and to me, it would make the problem less.
Right, I think that's true, I think Opal is assuming they've gone far enough in their due diligence, that if they buy the property, they're pretty convinced that wouldn't happen, but you're actually right, there's still a risk that they're wrong. There's one other issue to, to mention, there's also an issue that, that, um, comes up, so Opal's fine with Historic District, they would like Historic District, the boundaries likely have on Elm Street, so on Elm Street, all the buildings right along Elm Street are protected, but as soon as you get back into Smith Campus, they're not, they're giving, what really cares what faces the street, the equivalent of Clark School is, all the, almost all, all the big buildings, the buildings that people live in, are right along Clark Street, and they would all be protected, there's three buildings in the rear of the property that Opal would preserve, not, would prefer not to be protected, because they may wanna tear them down someday, one is the power plant, and they may set into steam power plants, it's very efficient, and they want individual power plants in each building, and then there's two, um, maintenance buildings, they're all tractors, they're, they're nice brick buildings, but they're not, they don't have that rich history, so.
Those are the ones grayed out on the, there's three buildings in the back that are gray.
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct, so Opal's request is, they're fine with Historic District, but not with those three grayed buildings.
What's the staff opinion on that?
I think it makes sense, I mean, you know, the neighborhoods worried about everything, obviously, they're worried about, they care these buildings and build something new, but there's one, the neighborhood's mostly been great, there's one thing that's annoyed me a little bit frankly, is, they want all these strict regulations for Opal, but one of the Historic District Commission looked at is, including all of Round Hill, and they were like, no, we don't need to regulate our property, you want to regulate their property, and I guess it's sort of, you know, development happens, I don't wanna stop development, and those aren't the core buildings, so I, I'm fine with not including it.
Well, and I'd like to circle back around, is there, I would love to have heard you say that Ed Lou was acting well and, you know, but that would seem like a way to get the counterbalance for the city's economic interests to weigh into, to this, so if we, if we recommend improvement and work forward to the council, but then have to come back out with Ed Lou, then.
Well, it might be for Ed Lou, it might not, you know, but.
When you can recommend, then it comes out.
Well, that's what I'm questioning, should we recommend that as a way to add an economic balance to the Historic Preservation?
But don't forget the councillors, it's a council vote, the councillors sit down, Ed Lou vote, nobody else votes.
All right.
But just so you know, the usual process for council, and this has even been more true in the last year, is, any one person wants something referred to a committee, they're happy to do it, they never object to, to come to this recommendation.
They tend to.
But if it goes after ordinance, if it goes after ordinance, it doesn't require ordinance, that is joint hearing with us though.
No.
With a planning add-on, I, this is absolutely the right thing to do, it's not one concern, and I, I'm not worried about the developer, I don't think that's my place to be, as of planning for everyone.
Make a motion.
That was chit chat, um, okay, what are we recommending, I make a motion to, uh, recommend the, um, expansion of the Elm Street Historic District to Round Hill Road Extension, is that?
Is that basically it, Wayne?
Well, but without, right, with parallel tracks?
For the kind of, we have Historic District.
Preservation of the four buildings.
Of the four buildings.
Yeah.
And also, yeah, and also, okay, and also the preservation of four buildings, uh, second?
Second.
Any more discussion?
Well, I add just the use of the word westerly twice in one sentence.
Oh, my God, it's sensitive, okay.
This is a long email exchange, see now.
Uh, all in favor? All righty, Wayne?
Thank you.
You're gonna read for forty minutes.
I have time to do this.
I have a couple of announcements, too, and Wayne, these are out of PBPC tonight, um, everybody there is all up in arms over a zoning change coming out of the state legislature that has not come out of committee, but they all seem to think that if it does, it's got terrible implications for all of the local communities, because it, uh, it is not necessarily being characterized as a zoning bill, but rather as an expedited permitting bill.
Well, it was one of the female way.
Right, so, um, it, it actually didn't come out of committee, and, uh, the Tuesday morning hearing didn't happen, the senate president's message that the legislation will get transparency and due process, so evidently it's something to keep an eye on, what I have is their take on it, that I brought you and Carolyn a copy of.
I got a copy, I'll leave yours.
And then the only other thing that was news tonight from there was, um, there is a metropolitan planning organization where the local elected officials get together and decide how to use project federal money funds and how it gets distributed down, and there are five tiers of towns that, that select delegates, I'm not sure that selects the right word, but, that are voted on by the planning commission, and they are all elected officials, but there are five large towns, there are eight next size towns, and so they do it in tiers, we're in the third tier, and Mayor Nakowicz is the selected delegate for the NPO, which I think is a good thing, y'all think it is from hand.
That's it.
I don't, I mean, in terms of the first thing, I don't know if you wanna weigh in and make comments to your, let's say, delegation.
They were kind of urging that people do, and, uh, Tim Brennan has, has offered to send around this email that he's sort of, put upon himself to, you know, beat the drum on, so, I have heard a couple of briefings about Lupa and Klupa, or whatever the other one was, the comprehensive one, and this is evidently.
Lupa Two.
It's Lupa Two, because the person who got combined in with the other one never liked the outcome, so it's never for sure, and that person is gonna help with this.
Lupa and Lupa Two?
Lupa and Klupa.
All right, we need a motion. Second, all in favor? All righty, thank you, Wayne, we need to give you a hard time, we, we actually had the shortest hearing in history, it was like seven minutes.
I think so.